... I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, the invocation will be given by Mr. Bob Horvath. He's a deacon at Newton Falls Baptist Church. Mr. Horvath, would you come to the podium, please?
Let me just say, in this day and age, it's a political correctness for someone to ask for a prayer. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. It does my heart good to see this happening. Let me just start by just saying that Thomas Jefferson said that honesty is the first chapter in the book of wisdom. And in 1 Timothy, it states that we should pray for our leaders because they are the ones we count on and trust to make the wise decisions for our well-being in the future. Let us pray. Dear God, I pray you bless this body with the virtues necessary for performing successful government: honesty, trust, and wisdom. Give them the strength to overcome obstacles, the wisdom to foresee possible problems, and the compassion for all of the lives that will be affected by their choices. Amen.
Amen.
All right. This is July 1st, 6 o'clock. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Newton Falls City Council. If you would please turn off your cell phones or put them to vibrate. Yes, we do. Unless pre-arranged, the public comment sections are limited to three minutes. We use a timer. When the timer goes off, we ask you to conclude your statements. The comment sections are not a debate or a question-and-answer session. The first public comments are agenda items only. The second public comments at the end is for anything you'd like. And we ask the spectators to respect everybody around you and keep your comments, you know, quiet so everybody can hear what's going on, and we'd appreciate that. All right. Now, with the quick piece take roll.
Mr. Stepper.
Here.
Mr. Bariak.
Here.
Mr. Sevett.
Here.
Mr. Beer.
Here.
Mr. Alperini.
Here.
All right. We have a special presentation tonight from Karen Conklin from the American Red Cross. Are you going to speak for this, Chief?
I'm going to introduce her to you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager, law director, financial director. I would like to introduce to you Karen Conklin. She is the supervisor, director of the Lakes to River American Red Cross chapter of our area. That covers Mahoning, Trumbull County, and Ashford, Beale County, if you would, please.
Good evening. Thank you for your time.
Welcome.
You only have two minutes to escape a home fire. And I'm here tonight to offer my condolences to you and to the community for your loss this week. Working smoke alarms save lives. So the question I have for all of you is how many of you have working smoke alarms in your house? Raise your hand. How old are they? Because if they're more than 10 years old, even though you replace the batteries and they beep, the sensors are no longer working. So I urge you to go home and check your smoke alarms. Second thing is how many of you have an escape plan for your children and your grandchildren? We do them in schools. Okay, so close your eyes. Fire in the middle of the night, how are you getting out? How are you getting out?
David's in trouble.
Okay. That escape plan, that front door, kitchen door, window, is blocked. Now, how are you getting out? Because most of us know the primary way we're going to escape a fire. Many of us never think about that secondary exit. So I'm here tonight to urge everybody to use Red Cross resources. We are a five-county chapter. We're located in Liberty, and we are here for your community. We are rendering assistance to the family that lost a loved one, but we're here 24/7, 365 days a year. So if you need us, call us. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, did you want to follow up with that?
Yes, Watson. I wanted to touch on a couple of quick things. The importance of a working smoke detector is vital to the escape, but I wanted to give you just a little bit of history so you could see. There was over 1,300,000 structure fires in the United States in 2017. As of today's date, in the state of Ohio, there have been 54 fatalities in structure fires so far as of this year. Forty percent of the deaths that occur in all structure fires are a result of no working smoke detectors. And that is an unfathomable number in today's age. We have partnered with Ms. Conklin and the American Red Cross to make available to everyone within the district, both the village and the township, a working smoke detector. We will come out and install the required number of smoke detectors in the proper place to ensure that there would never be another resident that does not have a working smoke detector or a functional smoke detector. Even though, as Karen stated, there might be a smoke detector hanging or seeing, it may not be viable. Just because you put a battery in it, it may not work when the time comes for it. So we today, partner, last Wednesday, we signed an agreement with the Red Cross, and since that date, we have installed 35 smoke detectors in the fire district's homes. And we just have been working on this seven days a week, and we'll continue on. We need the support of the city and the township to make this known to all persons. There is no restriction on the detector other than we install it in your home, and that's the only requirement that we have. We would advise anyone who has any questions to contact the fire department, or if any needs, just call. We will schedule seven days a week to install the detectors in any home. And I mean, we won't question, you need a detector, we'll come out and put it in. And we would like to make sure that we never become one of those statistics, again, that's read throughout the United States by fire departments of structure fires or fatalities in a structure fire.
Do you have an unlimited supply?
We have the resources of the Red Cross.
Yes, okay. Wow. Because we were talking about grants that might be available and that was going to talk to you about.
Right now, there is no restriction. We have a requirement of a certain number of detectors, one per floor, and that arrangement, but if you need it, we'll get it.
Yes. Is there a number to call?
You call the district station number at 330-872-7306. If we are out on a call, it will go to an answering machine. If you leave your number, we will contact you back.
So if I may, just for a minute. When people donate to the Red Cross, this is one of the programs that they are funding. So with unlimited, to answer your question, supply of smoke alarms, whatever the home needs, we rely on the experts. We also have a team of volunteers. So if there's anybody here tonight that lives out of the community, then call the Red Cross. This is an ongoing program. We're always looking for volunteers to help with it. But these are 10-year sealed battery alarms.
Ms. Conklin, you're away from the microphone.
Sorry. Okay, so these are 10-year sealed battery alarms. And we've installed over the last three years, over 3,000 alarms. What I love about this program is there are no income requirements. And if we come upon a house that has a hearing impaired person, then we will take that information, and we also have access to what are called shaker alarms. Y'all know what those are? Okay, so they work. There's alarm clocks, it's on the nightstand, the smoke alarm goes off, there's a pad between the mattress and the box springs, and it shakes the bed to arouse the person that's sleeping. And those are $230 each. I have a grant for those. So if you have community members that need a hearing impaired alarm, let chief know, and we will work to get them installed.
Chairman, can I just raise a point?
Yes, yes.
Because the chief said no restrictions, you said no income requirement. Ladies and gentlemen, what's being told here is they're free. There's zero cost to the homeowner. I'll make sure we say that word, F-R-E-E. There's no reason for anyone not to have a smoke detector now.
And I would just want you to understand, the only requirement is that we install them to ensure they're properly installed, and we can document that they have been installed to work with the Red Cross as far as their grants and needs and things like that. But we will schedule an installation seven days a week within your working schedule. So if you work an eight-to-five job, we'll come out when that work convenes you up to. And so I couldn't stress enough that we will leave this not unfinished. We will work diligently throughout our district to ensure every home in our response area has a working smoke detector.
I don't know if you, you know, I know that you do, you have fire safety days and that, but years ago, in the SCADA program, we learned that you never jump up out of bed or you never jump up when you're sleeping and something starts, or you never jump up because if you are startled and you're in a fire, your smoke detector goes off, sometimes the level of smoke or superheated air is just above the bed level, and if you set up and inhale that, it's over. And if you open your eyes and try to figure out what's going on around you before you do set up, you know, it could keep you from being, and I don't know what you teach now. Is there something that, you know, you could tell people about how to do that?
So I forgot the most important part of this program. Beyond the smoke detector, it's the education program. So your fire department, our volunteers, wherever they're doing it, while two people are installing the smoke alarm, the other person is doing community education. So we have an escape plan with a magnet attached to it. They are asking the same questions that I said to you. What is your, you know, what is your secondary exit? Where's your meeting place for your children and grandchildren? If your house catches on fire, is it the tree at the end of the driveway? Is it the neighbor's back porch? So there is an education component to this.
And this document is handed out to every smoke detector installed. Whether we put one or three in, we'll provide you a document. We provide a magnet. We even provide you the magic marker to make your smoke plan on your refrigerator so that you can. We have begun to work on an educational program. We'll be taking not only the fire program that we have, but we're going to be taking another educational program that, in talking with Karen, that we are going to bring into our schools. We are going to take every opportunity at every community event to be out and make sure you will see, just, we just received them today, signs that are posted out throughout the community that advise that we have free smoke detectors, contact us. We will leave, and you know, and oftentimes, you see after a major event in the area that you have a big push for a little while, then it kind of slows down. I assure you that we will not leave this as something that falls by the wayside, but instead, we will stand vigilant to ensure that our community is made aware of all this, and we'll make sure that they're there to anyone. I hope that out of this, if we could come away with one thing, that we will work to be harder and more vigilant to our residents in this community, that they can sleep nights assured that we are doing everything possible to protect them.
And I want to congratulate your chief for reaching out to us.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, this would be an excellent thing for our TV channel, if we could get them to come and do this safety talk that they're talking about doing at the school and so on, because we could play that over and over. People could tune into YouTube and watch it, you know. And I just think, the thing is, is you have something like that, and a lot of people don't make it to come and hear it. A lot of people forget about it after a while. It'd be nice if we had that on our channel.
I'm in.
We'll be more than happy to work with, we'll be more than happy to work with us scheduling that.
We'll have folks over at the Grandberry Films do a special insert.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, public comments. Tonight's agenda.
Katie Carl, 128 West Quarry Street. There's quite a few things on tonight's agenda, and I'm really disappointed that we still can't get the ordinances online, as was stated. Ordinance 2019-21, creating a community improvement corporation and having it as an emergency. This is a major slap in the face to our community. Okay, not only do you want to create Newton Falls as a corporation, that part's not so bad, but basically, you're setting us up as a business. And you're making us a loan, a bank, you're making us, I mean, I'm all for us with the economic development and the programs and progressing and going further and helping our community grow in every way possible. That's wonderful. Setting us up as a bank and loan and getting grants, there's so many other programs that are available out there with, in partnership, the rural development programs and the CDBG grants and whatever. They have programs already set up that way to work in conjunction, and they've been utilized before for our citizens to get those grants and get the loans in conjunction with the city. So why would you set the city up as a loan officer to do those things as a go-between and put us in that kind of a position? And it says, if the state agrees to that, but you're passing it as, you have it done as an emergency tonight. That's alarming. And you don't have the ordinance available for the citizens to see that online, to read that. I wasn't able to get up here to read it before the meeting. It's not posted. More people really need to come up and see that to know what's happening to our community, for our community. We already have our Treasury Investment Board being responsible and having the fiduciary responsibility to take care of our funds and the investments and everything else. Why take the money that is earmarked and should be taken care of and invested wisely? Is that where the money is coming from? Or are you going to take it from the investment fund and/or utility funds and raise utilities? I guess that would be another question, in which case, that's wrong. Okay? That would be a question. Where is this chunk of money going to come from to start this enterprise, or, I'm saying it wrong, corporation? That you're going to loan money to the citizens? And then what kind of interest? And all those other questions that aren't in that ordinance. That's a grave concern. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Under the mayor's report. Let's do this kind of in order, if council doesn't mind. Mr. Patisti, would you come up for a minute? You can run, but you just can't hide, so. There's a, Mr. Patisti, for those who don't know, resigned from council because he moved, his job went out of state, and he took a job out of state. But there's a very lengthy ceremony that goes with the presentation of your plaque. And I've cut it short because we have time restraint. So I'd like to give you your nameplate and, thank you, conservant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Come back. Hey, guys, face the camera.
Thank you very much. Okay. Yes, thank you. The second thing on the agenda. We have a young lady with us tonight from 254 Mizetta. She's working on her communications merit badge. So she came up here to watch the meeting. Her name is Hope Beckner. Her mother, Erin, is with her. Hope, would you like to come up and say anything?
Thank you, guys, for having me. It's been pretty interesting so far. I've never really done, been, or seen anything like this before. That's a pretty interesting experience.
Do we need to sign anything that you were here?
Nope. No, it's just a prerequisite before summer camp. It's what I need to get done.
All right. Take notes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I did want to say, you know, to the fire department, good job. It's pretty obvious with, you're sitting out the front yard there, and all the trucks are coming in from Lordstown and Milton, that we have, there's an issue in town. So you guys do a good job with that. Sorry about the circumstances, and our condolences to the families and obviously to the officers and the firefighters. Those aren't something you do every day when, you know, you have to work with those circumstances. But thanks for the, those who, you know, donated some food and beverages and the latest auxiliary. You guys do a good job. Also, I want to say, congratulations to John Roscoe's 13, 14-year-old boys' baseball team sponsored by U.S. Safety Gear. They finished second in the Portage County Boys Youth Baseball League. They got beat in the bottom of the seventh inning. Boy, that's a walk-off, walk-off on that one. That was a...
It was the umpire's fault.
He was the one who hit the ball. Oh, gosh. So anyway, congratulations to the kids. I want to say thanks to Nancy Hoffman and to Kathy Woodjick for working on the flower beds there in the Four Corners Park. They did a really nice job cleaning that up. Last couple of weeks have been a little bit busy. Went to an Eastgate workshop. Lot of information out of there as to how to apply for grants through Eastgate. It was a, it was a really interesting meeting. It was a lot of good information and a chance to talk with the state director on the funding and that, so that was good. We've had, I had a chance to meet with Congressman Bill Johnson and Tim Ryan, David Joyce, Anthony Gonzalez, and our state senators, Rob Portman and Sherrod Brown. I actually got to talk to each one of them individually in the last couple of weeks. That was, I think, good for the area. Also got to talk to Tim Pataki, he's the assistant deputy to the president, and Dr. Peter Navara, he's the director of trade and manufacturing in the United States. He's very interested in bringing trade and bringing manufacturing back to the United States, and, you know, we're looking at ways that we can work to bring that back to our area and how the support we can get. And we met with Robert Blair, he's the assistant to the president and the senior advisor to the chief of staff. The, I went down to the OML for a board meeting down there, and there's a lot of information, as I repeat every now and then, about some of the legislation that's going on in the state. And the local government fund that we lost, they did raise it from 1.66 to 1.68, so we're going to get some of that back. As you know, the gas tax went into effect. That's going to benefit us, although I haven't seen the numbers since they were changed and the numbers were downgraded. I haven't seen what the expectations are to the cities yet, but we certainly stand to get something out of that. There is the increase to funding for the Marx radio systems. That's good for our departments. There is a lot of, a lot of talk about the municipal tax collection, and there's still some debate and some things going on there. The supplemental distribution funds was restored, and we did talk about House Bill 163 again with the, that House Bill 163 would be detrimental to small communities like us. It would not allow you to charge a surcharge for your utilities outside of the corporation limits. It wouldn't allow you to utilize your utilities as a tool for annexation, and I am certainly opposed to that, and so aren't some of our legislators that are local. And there was a lot of talk about unpaid garbage fees. A lot of communities have problems with their unpaid garbage fees, and they weren't allowed to put those on their assessments, and now they're allowed to collect those. Ours are on our utility bills, so we can get those back. And there's, there's still a lot of discussion on the opportunity zones, a lot of good discussion on opportunity zones, just we're not in one. So that's, that's good conversations on those. And I did have a face-to-face meeting with CSX in Columbus. I've talked to the National Surface Transportation Board twice in the last couple of weeks, and I've talked with CSX in Jacksonville. We have a meeting coming up on the 8th with a lot of parties to talk about the rail that's out along Warren Road. So hopefully, we'll be able to salvage part of that rail and keep it for our economic Mr. Sevett.
No comments.
Mr. Bariak.
I attended the utility review board. We only had one case. It was resolved tammy-cobly. Thank you.
Mr. Stepper.
I didn't have to fill in as an alternate on any board, so I was, I have no report at this time.
Mr. Beer.
Okay. I attended the fire board meeting last Tuesday, the 25th, and the report for the month totals for, well, year-to-date, the city calls are 417. The township calls are 191. Mutual aid calls are 94. That's as of June 24th. And just some of the things that stand out on the report are, they, in this past month, they had 87 ambulance transports and 38 rescue calls. So a lot of times, I don't think people realize how much they're actually out there every day doing things, you know, to keep our community safe. So I'd like to thank you all for the work that you do. And that concludes my report.
Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did, myself, city manager Lynch, met with Guy Coviallo, Youngstown Warren Chamber of Commerce, also Brad Eberhart from Portage County Chamber of Commerce on our Portage-Trumbull meeting. Also, I'll let Mr. Lynch talk about this when his remarks come around. But there's been some misinformation about the missile defense system and how that's been approved and so on and so forth. I'm sure some of you folks have seen that in the newspaper. We can tell you this, and I'll let David expound this, it's factually untrue. And, but anyway, we'll be having a meeting with Portage-Trumbull here at the end of, in July, plus the Lattes and Legislatures is coming up as well. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Mossen.
My brief report for tonight is, obviously, this is July 1st, and no financial figures are giving tonight. However, I just want to briefly discuss that the state auditors, our independent auditor firm is Harrison Associates, and they have begun the audit. They're approximately 50% progress through the audit, and there's been no problems so far. In addition, I want to talk about the 2019 Ohio checkbook. We are in process of that. Just in the past, we typically don't upload the actual file until we complete the annual year. We typically do that in the beginning in January, February of each year. But we're working on, with the auditors, with the Ohio checkbook. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, sir. We received a reimbursement as part of the receivership for the health insurance from 2017, the amount of $22,000. I'd like to not speak about any details with regard to that. If council wants any additional details, we can meet in executive session next time. We're here, but the bottom line is, there was a recovery of $22,000 for money which we had paid in. I want to be aware of that, because you guys all know pretty much what's been going on. But there was, the receiver was able to reduce the money and the cost across the board to all the parties and reimbursed us the amount so far of $22,000.
And maybe more coming.
Well, yes, it may be more coming. So again, there's still the lawsuit in presence. If you need...
Were we allowed to tell how much we were, we paid though already?
Yeah, that's public record. That's public record.
So we're still out $132,000 so far?
No, that's, that's...
Out of 154, if we got 22, we're still in $132,000, right?
That was contractual money. Sir, that's the money we would have paid anyway. We have a contract, so the amount we paid for that six months was $120,000 as we sit here now. That's not additional money. That was the money that we would be required to pay under the contract for services. We pay for services every month to an administrator, and that was during the administration for that month.
Mr. Fritz, weren't we paying another company though?
No.
During that time?
No.
I've been misinformed. We were getting free insurance then for those months? That we were getting free insurance all?
No.
Well, we were paying somebody else then, weren't we?
No. This is, the amount that we paid for the 100 and some thousand dollars was for the six-month period of time from July to the end of the year. It's my understanding.
Of 17.
Of 17. Then in the receivership, when the lawsuit started, and I don't want to go into details about the lawsuit because it's still pending, and we had to pay an additional portion in order to make sure there was money available while the administrator, while the receiver negotiated settlements for all the claims that we had to pay for. And now we've received $22,000 back with regard to that. And that's all I have to report. I'm available for questions, gentlemen.
Any other questions from others?
Very good job, Mr. Fritz. Thank you so much for your due diligence, sir.
It's been a long whole show.
You have a nice tie tonight, too, as well.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Lynch.
Just a few things.
Whoop, whoop, hang on. There is a question. Go ahead.
Is that something when you go back in executive session tonight for, or did you say the next time?
I would prefer to get all the things worked out. We have the check and indicated that money was coming back. I'd like to have some communication with either the receiver or the attorneys so I can give them better information.
Okay. Let's move on. Mr. Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. There are a few things on the agenda for the report of the city manager tonight, the first of which is that, that I don't want to use the term that's bandied about with reference to the, what Councilman Alberini alluded to, but we want to make sure we're very clear on this. The United States government, through its military installations, has not made a decision for the location of the missile defense base. A letter was directed by Under-Secretary Griffin in the Defense Department, and being in, he's an undersecretary for some technical area, so undersecretaries have specific areas of expertise, and they're very far down the food chain. Now, this undersecretary, Michael Griffin, wrote a letter to a Congresswoman in New York, and the Congresswoman in New York read that letter and interpreted to mean that Fort Drum would be the designated site. She didn't read the letter very well, and instead what she did, she issued a press release and did a victory dance, saying, "We won in New York." The fact is that the decision has not been made, and the letter itself, if anybody wants to contact me at City Hall, I have a copy of the letter. Here's what the letter says. It says, "Well, based on the information we accumulated a couple of years ago, it seems to me like Fort Drum might be preferred, but we're not making the decision to build any missile, missile defense base at all at this time, and in fact, if we ever do decide to build a missile defense base, we're going to have to go back and reanalyze the information and bring all the decision-making back up to a modern collection of data," which, by the way, and this is my own editorial report, is that the, the updated information indicates that the number-one site for, in terms of what's most suitable, is Camp Garfield. Of course, we have a dog in the hunt. My only point is that this particular Congresswoman, in order, I think, to get out ahead of the politics of the situation, issued this press release, and if you read this letter, and again, it's available, I've sent it to every single member of city council, you can see that Camp Garfield is absolutely in the running. And the other day, you know, I spoke to somebody when this article came out in the newspaper, and this member of the community said, "Well, I'm feeling really depressed today because we lost the missile defense base." Don't feel depressed. We haven't lost a missile defense base, and I still think with the efforts that we're making, we can be victorious. So, please feel positive about what's going on in the issue of the missile defense base. Second thing I wanted to do was pass out, ask Madam Clerk to pass out these maps, and I will show the map on camera, à la the style that Johnny Carson used to do. Steve, if you can, can zoom in on this thing. That's perfect. Remember, I have it upside down, Steve. That's perfect, except for the fact it was upside down. It was perfect. Okay. And, and this map, we are going to be circulating it around town, and it demonstrates the appropriate route during the construction. Now, the construction is going to begin around July 8th. That's of the bridge. The bridge is going to be reconstructed around July 8th, and the bridge only at that time will be closed, not State Route 534, just the bridge, it's the main bridge, and also the covered bridge will be closed at the same time. So, you will have to follow a very simple route, basically take you back up to Main Street and then back down again, regardless of which side of the bridge you're on. In addition to that, some dates that are important, is that when the bridge is finished, State Route 534 will begin a resurfacing program that'll go from around September 20th through around the end of November, and during the reconstruction of 534, all of 534 will remain open. So, the level of inconvenience should be kept relatively to a minimum. There'll be a flagman keeping 534 open in those areas where the reconstruction is happening or the resurfacing, so that it's, it's moving forward in a single-lane fashion. So, Armageddon is not headed our way. The good folks in Newton Falls will have access to all the wonderful opportunities that we have here in this community, but I'm going to urge, when we pass this map out to all of our commercial locations, we'll also have this posted on Facebook, and make sure you get a copy of this map or contact my office, we'd be glad to get them. The third thing I want to mention is that we did experience a wonderful, especially wonderful weather and events concerning the car show and the bike show, and if the folks in the control booth are handling this, the way in which we mentioned, there it is, coming up on the screen now, you're seeing some of the highlights of the car show and the bike show. It was spectacular weather, spectacular attendance, and I think all the different members of council made appearances at different times. The mayor was present throughout, and if you want to know what a good vibe feels like, take a look at the rest of that video. The rest of that video is available on our YouTube channel and also on Facebook, but it was really outstanding, which leads me to talk about July 4th. July 4th is going to be spectacular once again. I'm expecting a little bit more oomph in the fireworks program this year, so do not miss it. And, as an added feature, as never happened before, the parade, which begins at 10 o'clock on July 4th, will be broadcast live by the city of Newton Falls, so you can watch it on Channel 1023 Spectrum, or YouTube, or Facebook. And it's, we're going to, one of these days will be as big as the Macy's Day Parade and a lot warmer, so please, please make sure you participate. And my last note, Mr. Chairman, has to do with our census. We are forming a committee here in Newton Falls. The committee is called Newton Falls is Counting on You, and we really want to make sure we get a fulsome count so that all the federal programs that flow from having a higher population, we can take advantage of. Therefore, I am creating, creating this committee. The chairman of the committee will be Mark Stumpert, Word Councilman from over there off of Milton there, and then in addition to that, the mayor will be the co-chairman. I will be a member as well, and in addition to that, there will be six other members that are going to be appointed over the next ensuing weeks. But as relates to that, we are sending correspondents to Columbus because the governor is forming a special commission to make sure all the communities are properly counted, and we have nominated Mayor Waddell, and in fact, we're going to ask the governor to make him the chairman of that committee. And the point here is that marshaling our resources, just like we are for the missile defense base, the census is important as well. So, the last element of this is appealing to U.S. citizens. Please participate in the census process because our community needs you, and we need to get a full count. So, Newton Falls is counting on you. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my city manager report.
Any questions from council? Mr. Alberini?
Yes, Mr. Lynch, could you expound on our meeting with the folks from Eagle Ridge and give, give some clarity to West Broad Street paving and so forth?
Sure. Folks that live over the Eagle Ridge area, beautiful development over there, have been somewhat concerned about the fact that we have some water retention issues that are going to be resolved with some construction work underneath the Eagle Ridge area to begin with, and if that would stand in the way of the resurfacing program for West Broad Street. After a lot of haranguing and going back and forth with the engineers and the construction firm, we've concluded that West Broad Street will go forward with this resurfacing and that the Eagle Ridge activity in terms of the construction will not interfere with that. There are a lot of reasons behind it, but the point is this. The Eagle Ridge water retention project and the elimination of the water issues is going forward, but the West Broad Street area will be resurfaced, and as a matter of fact, Councilman Savet, various representatives of the area, were at the meeting we had today, including Councilman Alberini, and we had in attendance our former councilman, Joe Batisti, who was honored here this evening because this project was in its infant stages when Joe was nursing this thing along to fruition, and it's been a group effort, but Councilman Alberini, it looks like a positive angle on things in every regard.
Also, not to interrupt you, Bob Lee and Mike Bobbith, residents back there at Chocagurary, have been active in their due diligence and helping push things along, so if you guys are watching from home on someone's back deck, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Yes, I just wanted to make clear that I noticed that in red, the resurfacing of 534 only goes to the middle of town there and Broad Street, going on to Milton. I thought it was going up Milton. It's not going up...
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate your point out, Councilman Stumpert, because originally we were told the entirety of 534, but the fact is, 534 from the Milton Point area that goes by the front of the mayor's house and into your neighborhood is in actually pretty good shape, and so that is not part of it, but still, it's, all the parts that need it are getting it.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. As I've told you a couple of times, I've talked with Director Lydia Mahalik, Director of the Administrative Services for the State of Ohio, and she's the lady that's handling all the census stuff, and after talking with her, the city received communications and mapping and stuff. It's kind of amazing what the government knows about everything, and they sent us an extremely detailed map of Newton Falls.
They know what's in your house.
They probably do. And, and they sent us new maps, and then today I sat down and altered all the maps to include all the new annexed property that has to be turned in so that we can count, because there are actually some people living in that area that can be counted for the city. So, I, I changed all the maps today, and when I get some information from the clerk, we'll send those back, so we should have the updated maps. They have to be in by January 1st, so we're well ahead of that date. Any other questions? All right. Any changes in tonight's agenda?
Executive session?
No, the motion to have a...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Can I be heard on that?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is somewhat originally unanticipated, but at our staff meeting today, we had a discussion. I'm going to be out of the country for a two-week period beginning January 8th, and...
January...
Excuse me, January, yes. Well, this, this keeps happening to me, right? I wish it were January, because it's about 113 degrees there now. I'll be out of the, the country July 8th through the 24th, and as a result of that, while I'll be in direct communication electronically, digitally, email-wise, and telephone-wise with the community, it is important, I spoke with the law director about this at our staff meeting today, and I would like to see if council would pass a motion to have the appointment of the police chief to act as the city manager in my stead for those instances in which the city manager needs to act physically or an original signature is needed or something else of that nature is needed, and I would consider the city to be in very, very good hands of Police Chief Fixler. Both the council would honor that. I appreciate it. The finance director, who might be an alternative choice, is also going to be gone, so that I think it'd be important to have that motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to add, a motion to make the police chief a temporary city manager? Any discussion? Roll.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
That'll be item number nine. All right, any other changes to tonight's agenda? Have a motion to accept the June 17, 2019 ordinance meeting minutes? Second? Discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
All right, we have a public hearing tonight on ordinance 2019-18, authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Jeffrey Zabinski to utilize...
Mr. Chairman, if I might, and I, forgive me if I'm out of order. I was hoping there might be an executive session regarding one of these matters later time, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time to make sure we, we bring that subject up regarding the executive officer issue for the police department.
We can't go into executive session for that because the subject is not named, the employee's not named in that?
Okay. I thought we discussed that. Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance 2019-18? I'll roll that closed. I, I would like to ask for a motion to amend ordinance 2019-18 to an emergency so that we can put this lease into effect right away and Mr. Zabinski can start utilizing the property. Is there a motion to amend this to an emergency?
We're going to read it first.
Okay, go ahead and read it.
Ordinance authorizing city manager to enter into an executed contract with Jeffrey Zabinski, AKA Fat Pappy's Concessions and Catering.
Is there a motion to amend that to an emergency?
No.
Got to do it first and then do it. Motion to accept this?
Up.
Sorry.
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Okay, now we're in discussion. Now we can amend it. Then is there a motion to amend this to an emergency?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
Discussion on the emergency? Roll on the emergency?
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any discussion now on ordinance 2019-18 as amended?
I'd just like to say that I think it's important, if he's, if we're going to lease this to the man and we've all agreed to do it, or at least the majority of us, it's a good idea to go ahead and do it as emergency so he can start his business instead of having to wait 30 days, so...
And just as a reminder, leasing of municipal property does require four votes, so, so we understand that.
What's that, Mr. Stumpert?
Leasing a municipal property requires four votes. So, any other discussion? Roll, please.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, would the clerk please read ordinance 2019-19?
An ordinance amending Part 9 Streets, Utilities, and Public Services Code of the Newton Falls Codified Ordinances.
Is there a motion to accept ordinance 2019-19? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd like to have an explanation on this.
Sure. I'm supporting this legislation by virtue of the fact that our municipal code related to our utilities does not designate the functions of the utilities in terms of their eligible expenses. This does not limit them because the list that's here indicates shall include but not limited to. One of the elements that's in there is economic development to expand customer base. We actually did that when we voted for the Venture Plastics thing. As you know, there was an economic incentive related to electricity, and I wanted to, out of caution, to make sure that we satisfied our auditors that we have this language in there. To the extent that there is the future utilization of any of these ordinances or any other matter related to economic development, those individual expenditures would go to the city council for its approval. So, all this does is makes a list of that which is eligible. The actual expenditure itself has to be approved by you and your appropriation. So, I ask for passes this evening.
Does this mean that we're going to use the enterprise funds?
Well, I'm not sure what you're saying in that regard, but what it means is that if I request to use an enterprise fund, city council votes on it. All this says is that it's listed as a possible expense, and I'll give you an example. Cleveland Public Power does advertising to try to get customers. They have to have authority to do that from the council. In your case, you pass the Venture Plast, you already use the enterprise fund. You pass the Venture Plastic item as well, and this merely satisfies the auditors that anything that we've done in terms of economic incentives, if it's related to a utility, that needs to be listed in our ordinance.
Let me ask you a question. Aren't we going through a rate study right now?
Yes, we are.
And if we start using money, a lot of money, from these enterprise funds, could it maybe down the road affect the revenue, and we may have to raise utility rates?
Well, in that case, I would vote no on using an enterprise fund for economic development. I'd vote no on it. All, all this makes it as eligible. It's not a vote on the specific expenditure. So, it depends on the size of the expenditure. Depends on the size of it, and so that'd be a reason to vote no.
Mr. Lynch? I think you were saying that if it... Mr. Lynch, I think you were saying that if it does come to actually spending money, that's when we would vote yes or no. This just is clearing up the language to make this work more efficiently with the auditors-
Yes.
And so on.
That's correct.
So it's really not taking money.
No.
Mr. Bariak, you're out of order. Anyone else for first address?
Was Gerard and Al's just wrapped up in the same thing, and they were using the enterprise funds, and they were, something was illegal?
Well, are you trying to-
Mr. Fritz at, excuse me, do you remember that, Mr. Fritz, about a couple months ago?
Recently, there was a lawsuit involving the city of Youngstown.
Yes.
I'm not sure if that's the one you're referring to, but at the time, the community of Youngstown took water monies and purchased some parking lots in order to encourage economic development downtown. There was a settlement of that matter, some people from Boardman who were getting water filed a lawsuit, there's been a settlement on that matter. We've been in communication with the lawyers with regard to that settlement. There's a lot of rules involving the use of, I'll use the word enterprise funds, but it's a little bit more complicated than that, in water and sewer separate from electric. We've always talked Newton Falls Enterprise Fund being electric and water and sewage. Technically speaking, under Ohio law, water and sewers are one section, treated one way, electric's treated another way. And the way you use the money is also restricted. To make a long story short, nothing we've done so far has been illegal, anything that I think that would come across my desk that would be a problem, I would flag and notify the city manager and council on the floor. But that lawsuit was settled, so we have no guidance from the court on what we're supposed to do in the future. They didn't say you could do it, they didn't say you couldn't do it, they settled that one kind of out of court. That's how Youngstown was settled. But everything we've done so far with regards to economic development, the money that you've transferred, has all been legal, and I believe everything's been pre-approved by the auditors, so we're making sure we're tiptoeing through these steps to make sure we're doing it properly.
Second of this?
Yes.
Well, I'd just like to ask the question, if I understand right, when we appropriate money from any utility, like the electric or the water, it has to go to something related to the utility, right? You can't just, you know, take water money and fix the park or something. And so, in reality, I mean, first of all, we're gonna be able to vote on whether we want to spend the money or not, and secondly, the money cannot be, by law, spent on anything other than, like, let's say if we were extending water out on Route 5, then we could do that with water money if we so choose to do it, right? But we can't spend it on things that are not designated or-
That don't pertain.
Don't pertain, yes, thank you.
Good, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have been, on that particular issue, the answer is yes, you're right about that. The auditors, we've been communicating with our auditors on a regular basis, so if, if I present an economic development-related cost as it relates to one of the enterprise funds, we intend to get that in writing from the auditors with approval before even presented to you. Even out of those circumstances, you could vote against it.
I think that what's interesting is, and I actually had a very long conversation, because I think that all of us, and even past elected officials, have always understood that you can only do a specific item with the enterprise funds, and we've all understood that. But in going to a lot of the meetings we go to, and listen to the communities and what they do and how they do things, you know, we've been very strict with our enterprise funds, and there are some other things that you can do that we have never done. One of the examples is you can't go into the electric fund and buy a police car. Can't do that. There are things that you just obviously can't do, but there are more things that you can do that we've never done or attempted to do, and that's why I was very happy when we got to the part that before anything's done, that he will have a legal opinion from the auditor's office-
Yeah.
-as to what can be done, if, you know, because if it can't be, we certainly don't want to do anything that's wrong. But if there are some things that you can do that we have never done before because of, you know, our understanding at the time of how that works, and the auditors say that what you're doing and what other communities are doing like this is legal and proper, then, you know, we would have that document. So I was really happy when he said that we won't do anything until we get an auditor's statement, so. Any other discussion on 2019-19? Roll, please.
Mr. Stepper?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Would the clerk please read 2019-20?
An ordinance amending the Newton Falls Codified Ordinances, Part 15 Fire Prevention Code to Include Smoke Detectors Required in Residential Dwellings.
Is there a motion to accept 2019-20?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Bariak?
I'd like to ask, is this legal to go into, if people don't want them, is this legal? Can we force somebody to have a, can we be challenged on this? That's all I want to know.
You can be challenged on anything, so, I mean, let's just, let's say that.
That's all I want to know.
Is that a sensible question? I don't know.
We are not-
Somebody better ask it.
As it stands now, we wouldn't be able to necessarily go door-to-door and check to make sure there's compliance. It'd be one of those things where if we found out through other information, or after the fact that, say, there's a small fire in someone's home, we've found out with no serious injuries, but we just have some reason for the fire department to be out there, and they find that there's no smoke alarms, that'd be something we might be able to cite. So the answer is, it can be enforced, I don't know if anybody's gonna sue us, again, there's always potential for a nuisance lawsuit, there's nothing particularly egregious in this ordinance that says, if it was bad on its face, I would tell you it wouldn't even be on the floor.
May I ask one more?
Sure.
We're not setting up a penalty, though.
Yeah, well, it's automatic, these things with the Fire Prevention Code has an automatic penalty put in, it's, all of the code has one final section in there that says it's a penalty, it's not specific in here, but everything in there would be, it's a minor misdemeanor.
Minor misdemeanor. Should the ordinance state that? Okay.
No.
That was actually the only question I had on this, so.
That's what I wanted to know.
Any other questions?
I'd like to say that we have a lot of laws on the books that we tell people how they have to do with their, you know, deal with their property. I mean, the zoning, you know, department, for example, is, that's what it's all about, and I'm just saying, I, when I first read this, I thought, well, should we be going and telling people that they have to put these in? But in the respect of, we already have a lot of laws where we're telling people what to do, we can't enforce it, but we have talked about expanding the zoning to the point that we do more inspections and so on, and I think overall, it would be good for the community to have them. I've got two of them sitting at home that I've never put up, and, you know, I mean, people need to have these in place.
That's what the right thing to say, the smartest.
But all I'm saying is, you know, I think it would be a good thing, and I think, you know, in respect to what, you know, recently happened here in town, we need to have people have smoke detectors in their house, so.
Guys, guys. Mr. Stepper?
My two questions, I'm not sure who to direct them to, either Mr. Fritz or Mr. Lynch, but is this in reference, is this going to be commercial and residential, or is it just residential?
I believe it defines just residential.
I know it just says required in residential dwellings.
It wouldn't even affect, at this stage, multifamily units. This is only for single-
So it wouldn't be multifamily units?
As it stands right now, this is all it applies to, is single-family units.
Single-family.
Could I ask, I mean, is there a reason we stopped at single-family and not multifamily?
Then the lawsuits might start.
Where do you get there?
We're gonna do some more reviewing of it, we want to get things started.
We're looking at that.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna talk-
Anything other than residential, I'm sorry, anything other than residential is covered under the Ohio Fire Code, and henceforth, any type of commercial property, any type of apartment structures or anything is already included in the Fire Code, and it's also in the Ohio Building Code, so the only thing is not in any of those codes is the residential aspect. That was one of the reasons we approached Mr. Lynch about bringing something in that would have-
Does that include duplexes?
If it's a rental property and classified, there's a certain number of property rental units that have to get into a commercial, so a duplex and things of that, if it's a rental, then it falls under the Fire Code, but if it, if one person owns it and their mother lives next door, it is not an enforcement area. This would allow us then to, titling them as individual units would allow us to require a smoke detector. If I could just add, we want to ensure that people understand that we will make sure this is not a burden on them, that we should never get to the penalty stage of this, that we have the ability to bring this smoke detector compliance free to your home, and so I would, we want this ordinance to prevent any further tragedy in our city, but in the same sense, we're not looking to put a burden on any person, and again, along with Karen, we're not asking any questions how you got in the property, we'll just put this smoke detector in, and then we should never reach the penalty phase at any part of this ordinance.
Is there going to be a database somewhere that's-
We do keep a database, along with the Red Cross and ourself, of all the units that are being installed, we'll maintain that file with the Red Cross.
My last question is, you kind of answered it, but I, are we gonna be able to enforce this at the fire level, at the police level? Who, is this like, I know it's an ordinance, so does it, how do you really enforce it without being able to go in, like you said, go in and see these people?
It can always be enforced by the joint fire district, but primarily would be our, the code enforcement officer, who'd come in there as often as he's. That's one of the things that code enforcement officers do zoning, does planning, would have other duties, this probably follow one of those duties that we would have. Again, it's not like you can be able to enter a home without a warrant, to double-check on anything, we're not trying to turn into something that's, it's more of a, we want to make sure we're stressing the situation to people, and that we have this issue, if there's a minor incident, that we can enforce at that point, as the chief said, we're not setting it up with the goal of trying to make a burden on anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, there are two points I want to emphasize about this legislation. First one is, and this is a thumbnail opinion on the implied question of constitutionality. If the government can tell you that you have to wear a safety belt to protect you from hurting yourself or being killed in automobile accident, then the government can tell you to protect your family in case there's a fire by having a smoke detector. Secondly, this legislation applies to the owner of the property, and owners are, that rent property, are interested in being in compliance. By having this, that means someone who comes to the city hall and says, hey, I'm gonna be renting property to somebody in this community, are there any things that I should know about? This is what we'll tell them about. The lady that passed away was living in a home without a smoke detector, and it was a rental unit, okay? If that owner had come to town and said, we want to make sure we're in compliance, we had to handle this legislation, maybe then there would have been a smoke detector. I'm not saying for sure there would have been, but the point is that there's no downside to protecting against these horrific events.
I think this is great legislation, I think we're overthinking this way, way, way too much, in light of what's happened here this last week, and a couple months ago with the apartment fire over here across the river. I think it's just good practice for everybody to have a smoke detector and not read too much into it. Look, at the end of the day, we've got snow ordinances and snow bands and things like that, does everybody shovel their sidewalk in front of their house, and do we have people to watch it? Probably not, but I would say, to Mr. Fritz's point, everybody's gonna be on the honor system here, and if you want to protect your family, goodness gracious, get a smoke detector. I mean, come on. You folks over at the Red Cross, Karen, you do a fantastic job, chief, fantastic job. You're telling us, look at people, be smart about your houses, be smart about your children, be smart about your kids, get a smoke detector. So, by the way, thank you.
I think as it goes to your question of enforcement, we have talked off and on here in the last six, eight months about, you know, how to revamp the zoning and, you know, possibly doing an inspection, issuing a letter, you know, allowing you to operate a business, you know, to inhabit the resident, the rental property, you know, to do an inspection of that, an occupancy permit. We've talked about, you know, is that feasible or practical? And if it gets to that point, because other areas do that, they do have those inspections, they do off, they do go in and inspect before it can be rented, and they, and those are one of the things that you would check, it's on the list as a smoke detector. So that's kind of how you would enforce it, and if, you know, there is a fire, and it isn't working, the batteries are missing, then it's up to somebody else to do their thing, so. Anyone else? Roll, please.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stepper?
Yes.
Motion passes. Would the clerk please read ordinance 2019-21?
An ordinance creating a community improvement corporation and authorizing the city manager to develop appropriate articles of incorporation and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to accept 219-21?
Someone? Second?
Just, I know I speak last, but I just want you to understand, we had a CIC, the city's had one for a long time, and it was closed out and shut down because we never used it, we never had the opportunity to use it, so we've had one for a long time, and now we don't have one, and it came up at one of my meetings that if you're gonna deal with property and a lot of other things, that you need to have a CIC, and I knew we had one, and I brought it up, and everybody says, oh, yeah, we have one, and we found out that it had been closed out. So we've had a CIC before, this isn't anything new to us, so.
Could the city manager just explain a little bit to the village people, just a very rough-
Village people.
Yeah, to the people of the village, excuse me, excuse me, I misspoke.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Sorry, am I recognized, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The Community Improvement Corporation, Ms. Carl, I think it existed during the time that you were on city council, so obviously you're familiar with the fact that a Community Improvement Corporation is not turning the city of Newton Falls into some kind of separate corporation. Right now, you are a municipal corporation, and you have been ever since you had a charter, which is many, many moons ago. So what is a Community Improvement Corporation? It is a subset entity of the city of Newton Falls, which is created to take advantage of certain economic development opportunities, should you vote to fund them. In other words, if you vote to create the Community Improvement Corporation, you're just putting back in place something we had for about 40 years around here, and dissipated because it stopped having meetings, as the mayor said, we failed to use it. So all I'm trying to indicate to you is that if you should decide to exercise the use of that and fund the Community Improvement Corporation, I'll ask you to do so at a future date, but right now, I want to put this truck in the garage. If you should decide to drive that truck and put some gas in it by funding it, great, but we should have a Community Improvement Corporation, because there are grants that community corp-, Community Improvement Corporations can receive that the city can't receive. There are actions that we can take, and all of you in your wards know about properties that you know that the most simple solution might be the demolition of that property, and you can do that more easily through the Community Improvement Corporation. And last, we've been working with our consultants at Youngstown State University, they drafted this legislation based on the effectiveness that all the other communities have had, and the opportunities they've had, that we're now missing out on because of the fact that we let our CIC lapse. So I hope that you respond to this in a positive way, and we can get this city moving.
Another thing that is equally as important on the CIC is property. When the municipal corporation acquires property, whether it's purchased, donated, or whatever it is, but once property belongs to the city, and you want to give it away, you want to sell it, whatever it is, to a business coming in, or however you want to do that, you can't just sell it, you just can't give it away. You have to put it up to an auction. That's why a CIC, you can put the property to CIC, and then you have different opportunities. It's easier to work with land and buy and sell land than it is through the municipal corporation. Mr. Tom, read.
I almost forgot my name there for a minute.
Well, I was looking at the, I almost called you Zach for a minute, but-
You can call me Zach.
Okay.
Katie, I appreciate your comments on the CIC, and I understand completely. I'm all for a CIC, community investment corporations, if you look at most of the progressive communities in northeast and Ohio, whose economies are growing, they also have CICs as well. I'm of the opinion, this council person's of the opinion, that we need all the tools and the economic tool belt we can get, and the CIC is a great tool to have. If you go to, if Bearwood- If you go to, if, if, Bear with me for a second, council, if you go to the second page of the ordinance, you'll see section eight where it says, borrow money for any purpose of the CIC, provide loans to individuals or businesses, that's seed money for companies who wish to come in, or maybe some entrepreneurs here. Buy, lo, buy, lease, sell real, or, excuse me, buy, lease, sell personal property, acquire the goodwill, business rights, blah, blah, blah. So there's a lot of things that CIC gives us flexibility as, as a kind of a separate entity from the village itself. But I'm, I'm all for something like this. Like I said, any, any incentives that we can give to people come into town, I'm all for. Thank you.
Mr. Beer?
Yes, well, I think one of the things that bothered Katie, and it kind of, you know, I questioned too, was just the fact that loaning to businesses and all that. But having had an explanation, it sounds a lot more, you know, like something we might want to do. But the one thing I'd like you maybe to elaborate, elaborate on was the fact that we're going to do this as emergency. Is there a particular reason why we need to do? I, I mean, we just passed something by emergency. I, I understand we could do that, but sometimes the public looks at it when we do it too much, so maybe you could elaborate.
Yeah, you know, this is probably an apropos time to talk about this concept without getting too deep in the weeds. Legislative action at the municipal level, declaring something to be an emergency is more a term of art than it's a term of science. And what I mean by that is, when you pass legislation on an emergency basis, you're not saying, if we don't pass it, this building's going to burn down and people will die, there's an emergency. That's not what it means. It means that it's a matter of urgency to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. In other words, it means it's a recognition of the fact that it's something that's important, and it's better that we do it now than we do it later. And I was having a discussion the other day with the council clerk, and her experience in working with the Municipal Clerks Association, there are communities that only pass legislation that's listed as an emergency. And it's, and it's not by virtue of the fact, again, that, that they're saying, well, people are going to die and houses will burn down if we don't pass the legislation. What it means is, there's an element, element of importance that it's better that we act now. Now, the, you know, the mayor and I have talked about this a little bit as well, and the past practice of this body was more in the category of passing everything as emergency up until a few years ago, when a dialogue such as the issue that you're raising was brought up and, for some reason, was determined, well, let's not utilize the, the normal legislative meaning for emergency, and let's get involved with the literal meaning of the word emergency. It is not literally an emergency. It means it's important. And as I mentioned before, it's related to the CIC and generally, we might get this city moving. And one of the elements, if there's something that's dramatic, you shouldn't pass it on an emergency basis because it should be studied further. This CIC, once it's created, we have to pass a charter, send some documents down to the Secretary of State, is an unfunded entity. Because as a legislative body, you control the purse strings. Therefore, if you allow us to get this CIC created, and I want to do so because I want this paperwork down to Columbus after review by the law director, then we'll have this truck in the garage. Later on, you can vote whether to put gas in it or not. I hope you do. But the point is that acting on this on an emergency basis is not an act of drama, it's an act of common sense.
Actually, some of my questions were answered. However, I know we talked about property being put into the CIC. So technically, the property that we purchased on 534, that is, that would be put into the CIC?
If you voted to do so.
Okay. And my question is, it's not really something new to Newton Falls, we've just, we've had it in the past, probably when Ms. Carl served. I'm not sure when it was defunct. However, we're just reintroducing it, so, okay, that's my question. Thank you.
I have two questions. We haven't, we haven't gone for, asked for the money yet, how much? We're not discussing that?
Nope.
Section nine, any, how did this, how does this come about? Is this standard? Any one member appointed by the city manager, subject to serving at the pleasure of the city manager, and subject to removal by the city manager without cause. How did, why does, why is that written like that? Did you write that?
Yeah, it's, this was written originally, the original documentation-
I mean, is it standard, is this a standard CIC? Excuse me.
Yes, but I want to make sure I put a, put an asterisk by that. Because every CIC is different a little bit, depending on the community, depending on the intended uses of it. Every CIC is the same. The original draft came from the folks over at YSU. The intention, and it is, is pretty standard to have what's known as a fluctuating member of the, of the CIC, and that's the third position. One of the reasons for that is, people come and go, you know, Councilman Battisti got transferred over to Bowling Green, Kentucky. And you want to have a member that is known as a floating member, and that's pretty standard stuff. You also want to make sure you've got a couple of ex officio members, which are people who have membership by virtue of their title and position, the city manager and the mayor. The city manager isn't going to be David Lynch forever, and the mayor's not going to be Lyle Waddell forever, so you want to have ex officio members, and then there's a floating, floating one. So is it standard? No. Is it the common practice? Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, it actually goes to John's comments a little bit here. Was there a consideration for a real estate person to be in that membership?
Sure. The, you mean the, the third, the third slot? Or add somebody else?
Either in that third slot or be within, you know, add a fourth or fifth, I wasn't sure if that was a consideration.
Is there a number of CICs that are examples?
That were given out by YSU, and in the, the groups that I'm with, I've seen a bunch of them. That's where I found, I got to talk to them, because we were talking about some different ones, and I knew we had one, so I wasn't, you know, I was listening to how they did it. But some of them have three, some of them have nine, some of them have 14. I mean, you can put as many as you want, and, you know, I, I agree that if you're going to deal in real estate, you know, somebody that deals with real estate is probably better than, you know, any of us. But we do have a guy that we deal with right now, that, you know, if we have real estate questions, we do talk to him, especially within the economic development part of this deal. We have a, a guy that we call and ask questions and, and look for his expertise when we're doing things. So we have a real estate person kind of on board with us as part of the YSU group and the economic development team. It's just not attitled, but we do talk with them, yes.
That was the other question I had tonight, apply for the minister grants. I thought YSU, we gave them $30,000, they were going to be our main grant person, Mr. Lynch.
Right.
So are you still going to be getting grants too, or?
Oh, no. You're, you're confusing the two roles. YSU is, YSU is serving as our consultant to help us get grants, they'll serve as our consultant to help us get grants for the CIC. But the name of the grant recipient makes the difference. So instead of saying the city of Newton Falls, under certain grants, it might say the Community Improvement Corporation, the CIC of Newton Falls. That doesn't change the fact that we've got the same consultant helping us. We're not going to be paying somebody at the CIC to help us write grants, that doesn't make sense.
John, we have, we've talked with YSU to help us get grants. Ms. Musson and I have access to grants through AMP, through AMP, and there was a text there about some grants that were available. But every month, I get a federal grant list that comes out, and there's hundreds of grants on there, most of them are in foreign countries, but I've talked about those before. But every month, there are grants, and you can do a grant yourself, you can, if you find a grant. They've always said that anybody can do a grant, and we welcome anybody to help us with grants. We've talked about that when we were at our little trip about grants. And anybody can get a grant, anybody can come up and say, hey, here's a grant that's available, can we look at it and work at it and see? But we have people that are expertise in that, that we take those and give it to them and say, because it's, there's more to it than saying, hey, here's a grant that we could use. There's just tons of paperwork and, and everything else to make sure you qualify and that, so you need somebody to help you with it. But it's always good to have other people looking to see if there's a grant, because, you know, it goes back to a grant that never materialized with the community center through Sheriff Brown's office and through Sarah Lowry, there never was a grant. I mean, there just never, ever was a grant. I don't care what anybody tells you, there never was a grant. Now, there was, if you look at here, it says there's a grant, but when you call about it, it doesn't exist. So why they do those things, I don't know. So those are the things you have to look at, you go through, and, you know, you guys can all, if you come up with a grant, certainly bring it up to somebody, and they'll look into it. That's all there is, yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to just say one thing. I think it's a great idea. I was told on the floor tonight by you, Mr. Alberini, and Mr. Lynch, it'll be transparent, we'll know where the money's going and how it's going to be spent. That's all I'm worried about for the public. I'm on board.
It has to be. I mean, that's what the CIC does.
As long as we know where it's going.
That's a, that's a public form, and it has to be. So, any other discussion? Okay. Ball please.
Mr. Svet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stepper?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Would the clerk please read, do we do 2019-21 for a second reading?
An ordinance creating the City Community Improvement Corporation and authorizing the city manager to develop appropriate articles of incorporation and declaring an emergency.
Would, we have a motion for 2019-22 for, 21 for a second reading?
Second.
Second? Discussion? Ball please.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stepper?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Stepper? Yes. Motion passes. Would the clerk please read ordinance 2019-22?
An ordinance authorizing the police chief to appoint an executive officer in the police department and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to accept it? Second?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Stepper?
I just noticed on the top here, not that I'm picking at it, but it just says, it's a little bit titled differently than our normal ordinance is. You got, what's that?
Let's put an extra 2019 in there.
We had a, we had a spirit 2019.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
We're going to do this twice this year.
Yeah.
I'm going into January, so whatever it does.
I'd like to start out by asking a question, and I think it's of the law director. I've read this over several times, and my concern is that if we don't go through civil service, does this open us up for any lawsuits?
This is kind of like a differential pay as opposed to creating a new position. It's kind of like someone gets an additional license, we don't have to modify how the superintendent pays them for their additional licenses, the status still remains the same. We've drafted this in such a way as we have as an executive officer, it is, it's not a modification of a title for civil service, he still retains all the civil service standards and ranks that he had before, all we're doing is giving him a differential pay. That's why it's separated out, if you see a smaller amount added to whatever the pay is, we're not changing the title. So it should be not, any, there should not be any civil service implication.
I have some questions for the law director.
Are you done, Mr. Stepper?
My, my question to that is, then, I'm all for it, but there, it, it's to make, make it an executive officer, and that's not in the, in the charter, that where he could have as many, I get reads, I don't know what it reads, but off the top of my head, but it's, he can, the police chief can have as many lieutenants, all that, but there's no executive officer in there. Are we breaking the charter by passing this tonight? I don't believe so.
Okay. That's all I have. Mr. Bariak?
I'd like to read one, the charter 141.02 composition. The police department shall be composed of the chief of police, as many lieutenants, sergeants, officers, part-time dispatchers, as the city manager and council deem necessary to appoint from time to time. The police department, B, the police department shall be composed of reserved officers, auxiliary officers, and adult, crossing guard is the chief of police, deemed necessary to appoint from time to time. There's no argument about, I'm not arguing about the man getting a position. The two questions I have for the law director is, number one, are we going to be stuck with this position? Is this going to be a permanent position? And I, I don't care how you, Mr. Fritz, I don't care how you title it, code it, sugar it, we're creating, as far as I'm concerned, a position. And then you say at the end of the ordinance, excuse me, any ordinance, section six, any ordinance or part of the ordinance in conflict with the content of this ordinance is hereby repealed. Why, why do we got to do that then?
We put that in probably 90% of our stuff. That's designed so that when the company codifies our laws at the end of the year, they know that we're removing things that were there before. If you look, it's probably on, probably a nine out of 10 ordinances that you get to you, it says, that's a standard clause I put in all of them. It's not unusual with this one.
Mr. Beer?
Well, I'd just like to ask the question, the way I understand this, it's basically to have someone in charge if the chief is not in town or gone away. And how have we dealt with this all along? I mean, is it necessary to have this position? And is there, again, a reason why we should do this by an emergency? I, I know that, I understand what you just explained, but, but, you know, for the people, well, why does this have to happen right now? Why can't it happen under the normal guidelines? Anyways.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to say a couple of words in response, because I think it's an important question. I may also ask for suspension of the rules for the purposes of having the police chief get a little bit of input. But I, I guess I want to say it this way. The police department is our largest personnel department, because, you know, the fire department is separate with the district. And by a wide margin, the police department has over 30 different personnel working over there by virtue of, we have lots of part timers, and we have auxiliary police officers. So imagine the scenario, the chief leaves town, and now he has a inspector of rank, all of even rank within the police department. The chief says, well, this guy's in charge while I'm gone. If you have any questions, this guy's in charge while I'm gone. So that guy might be in charge while he's gone, but the fact is that the individual that the chief wants to identify to the rest of the department, the rest of the department hasn't been identified in any official way, shape, or form. And this creates that official designation. Now, I mentioned that there was between emergency and being a term of art rather than science, but the fact of the matter is that we deal with police emergencies on a regular basis. And the only thing I can say in that regard, and I'll, I'll give sort of a Star Trek analogy, remember the captain of the Star Trek, at least the Captain Picard version said, this is the number two. And he said it in such a way that everybody on, on the starship Enterprise knew that this was the number two. In military rank, and this is the only department we have in which there's military application of discipline, procedure, and carrying forth of orders, the only department we have like that, it's important to have a designated, clear, concise, irrefutable designation of who is the number two. And I want to make sure this chief has that power and authority. And by the grace of God, he does have people with the kind of talent that can assume that mantle, and are willing to assume that mantle of responsibility under a circumstance in which the additional compensation is a dollar an hour, which is $40 a week. So the police department, I guess, I'm saying to, to some extent, is greatly different than the other department. And what made me want to make sure it got passed on emergency reminded me of the life and death circumstances that occur in this community on a regular basis, where the military organization better have a number two. And if we don't have a number two designated next week, because we decide not to pass emergency, maybe that would cause some kind of a problem. I know this much, when that horrible fire happened and that, that young lady expired was a terrible thing. But the people that got there first were the police department. I, I, I bow to the expertise, I bow to the training, and I bow to the dedication. And our chief is not someone who comes by this request lightly, he's been law enforcement more than 40 years. So my view of this thing, it's not a dramatic act. This is a matter of sensible housekeeping, and I want to clean up this part of our house.
I know the fire department has a, like a deputy chief, and I guess that does make sense that it's important to have somebody that's- sense that it's important to have somebody that's clearly in charge in the event that the police chief isn't here. Especially if you have people that maybe are the same rank and it becomes a question of who actually is in charge.
Especially in an emergency, by the way. I mean, life and death, death decisions have to be made by our police department. Life and death decisions. We better have a clear demarcation of authority.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to say this. Um, I, as Mr. Lynch said, I, um, rely on Chief Fixler's expertise. He has been in law enforcement for forty-some years. But also, if you think about it, council members, we're doing the same thing. We just deal with Mr. Lynch, him going to India. The chief is filling the gap for Mr. Lynch, and if, if, if the chief is out, then someone fills the gap for the chief. I see no problem with it whatsoever. I think it's important that you, um, uh, we have some type of protocol in place to have someone who is designated to be that supervisor or that, that point of contact in that organization, so I have no issue with it whatsoever.
Mr. Savet?
Yeah, uh, two questions, um, per carefully maybe to Fritz, is us paying him the forty dollars a month, and I realize that's not a large amount, like while he's not performing that duty, would it be more sense to pay him while he's acting that duty for the dollar?
Well, I think it's a permanent duty. He's gonna be all the time, whether he's here or not, he's, he's the guy you call to.
Well, I get that, but we're, if he's retaining his rank and he's not gonna be performing that duty when the chief is here, does it make sense to pay him for that duty while the chief is here?
Can I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, it's not a matter of performing that response, that, performing that duty. It's a matter of carrying that responsibility. When the chief is here, he still carries the responsibility of number two. So it's a matter of carrying the important responsibility and being the number two. Uh, and he's in that level of responsibility while the chief is here. In other words, he realizes that he has to make decisions while the chief is gone, but the chief needs to rely on him, as his number two while he's here. So it's really a matter of responsibility. Um, you cannot discount the value of having that integral person, especially in a military situation. I guess it's like this, Zach, if you're in a foxhole, you want somebody next to you in that foxhole that you can rely on under any circumstance whatsoever, and, um, the chief deserves the opportunity to have that, that, that person next to him like that. So I don't wanna pay him a dollar an hour every time the chief goes on a trip. I wanna pay him a dollar an hour because he's wearing that mantle of responsibility.
Okay, I'm just, I was more concerned on the civil service side of things, more so than having that number two person realize the portion of it is not that expensive, but it was just more in the civil service side of things that, could we be getting, you know, potential issues with other officers that, you know, oh, well, he has changed his title into that, you know, number two spot, and I just wanted to make sure we were all set with, you know, those types of issues that we weren't gonna have us.
I have a second address there.
I think you said that's okay.
Second address.
I still didn't get an answer, Mr. Fritz. Are we creating a, we are creating a position. I don't care how, it's a position.
Are you asking me a question or are you telling me something? You're asking me a question?
Are we creating a position, sir?
No, we're making a differential to a position that's already established.
What's established?
The, the position of sergeant within the police department.
I thought he's gonna be an acting commander when the chief's gone.
He, okay.
What do you call that?
He's gonna be called an executive officer.
Oh, yeah. Which is a position, isn't it?
No, we're, uh, we have a base pay. If he, if it wasn't a sergeant, he could assign a regular patrolman to the job if he wishes. He's not attached to the sergeant's position in any way. He gets to name who he wants as, as the executive officer. So he can have patrolmen, and that patrolman would get the pay differential. It's not just the sergeant. Uh, in this case, I would, I would think that he's gonna pick from the sergeants that he has, since that's the next level down from him, but he would have the right to pick anybody he wants that's in the police force in order to take that. It's a differential pay for those extra responsibilities. It's why it's not a creating a new position.
Will this be permanent, though, as far as, even if Mr., whoever he picks, go, doesn't want it anymore or something happens, will somebody else step into that job? Or are we gonna have this, is it a permanent creation?
I don't have a crystal ball. I believe that the chief and future chiefs have the ability to either assign someone that position or not, I mean, that, that, the differential duties or not. And based upon that, uh, I can't say, you are creating the differential pay and allowing the chief to name an executive officer. You're not creating a brand-new position over there, and it's not, again, if you look at the ordinance, you're, you're, it's, it's not a full-set salary. It's a sal, it's a, it's a pay in addition to the regular position for the salary. So you guys, when you do budgets next year, you're gonna see what, if you ever modify any of these salaries, sorry, the pay scales, then, uh, you would have to look at that as an addition to the pay scale. So what, here's your question, it's up to the, the chief whether or not, if, if he names someone and says, "I, I don't, I don't think it's worthwhile, I'm not gonna name it," that person leaves the force, it's up to him if he wants to name a second person.
I'd like to, I'd like to say something, then. Tonight, we've, we've gone along and, uh, I don't think this, to answer Mr. Alberini, I don't think the situations were exactly the same as far as Mr. Lynch going to India. But I'd like to read section twenty-one under emergency ordinances. When necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, welfare, or safety, the council by affirmative action vote of two-thirds of the members elected there may adopt an emergency ordinance which will take effect immediate upon passage. Such emergency ordinance shall set forth and define the specific facts designating the emergency. Now, the police department's been, how many years we had a police department? Do you remember when the police department started, chief?
It was the nineteen thirties.
Okay. Did it cease today or is it gonna cease tomorrow if we don't, if we don't have this position? I mean, I, 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 as far as, I'd like to see it myself, I, nothing, I'm not against the guy, giving him a merit raise or, or creating a position, but this emergency thing, and I know, this has got to come to a halt when, you don't let the taxpayers have a say on the way the taxpayers' dollars are spent. This is what I'm getting at. We rush everything through without letting the taxpayers have a chance to come up and say, "Hey, this is how my dollars are spent. We're just gonna spend their dollars without giving them a chance." There's no reason for this. There's no reason at all that we gotta rush. I'll, I'll tell you what, I got a hundred and sixty dollars. Can I give it to?
John, I think you're out of order there.
Wait a minute. I mean, if, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just sorry, but I, that's my, my, my position is, I don't think this rises to the occasion of an emergency ordinance. I do not feel, and I won't vote for it.
Anyone else?
I wanna make one, one final comment to Mr. Bariak's, um, questioning or whatever it is, it's called. Too much analysis leads to paralysis. I think it's as pretty cut and dry. The chief recommends that we have a, an executive officer, and we vote on it. Simple as that. Let's vote.
Anyone else? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
I just have one other question. Just, just for clarification, could I have a second address, please?
Sure.
Um, this just has to do with your, your trip to India or wherever you're going. You're, you're appointing him. Should this pass, and something, I'm just saying, what, if, if he's out of town, or God forbid, something happens to the chief, does this person that we're, has he become the next in line, or do you?
No, no. It comes back to council.
You have a secondary person other than the chief to take your place?
If we get that, it's an emergency situation, we will reconvene the council and reappoint what we need to appoint.
Okay.
I have a Learjet tanked up, so there's a problem.
Okay, we're continuing to vote.
Okay, sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure that we were.
Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
No.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Motion passes. We need a motion to, uh.
Gotta read it again.
You have to read it.
Yeah, read it again.
Okay. An ordinance authorizing the police chief to appoint an executive officer in the police department and declaring an emergency.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
No.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes, of course.
Can I move forward now?
Yes. Thank you.
The court please read resolution thirty-nine dash two thousand and nineteen.
A resolution authorizing the city of Newton Falls to dispose of unneeded equipment, property by sale, by sale to employees, public auction, on internet auction, or salvage pursuant to section seven-two-one-point-one-five of the revised code.
Is a motion accept resolution thirty-nine two thousand, two thousand and nineteen?
So no movement.
Second? Okay, discussion? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Uh, we need a motion to direct the city manager to have the superintendents present written quarterly reports and provide the written or oral reports upon request to council?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, um, we just, anyway, correct me if I'm wrong, we just want those submitted, not upon request, right?
Yes.
So is it upon request or not upon request?
No, that's a bit of a quarterly.
Okay, well, what he reads is provide written or oral reports upon request.
To council.
To council. So should he?
I, I think the qualifier of upon request applies to the verbiage oral. This is like interpreting, you know, the Second Amendment.
Yeah. Okay, I, I was just making sure. I, I wanted to clarify. I, I didn't want.
Yeah, you will get written reports if this passes, and upon request, uh, oral reports as well, but, uh, my intention is also to make sure that, for example, when we had the problem with the high turbidity in the river, we immediately made sure that Jeff Hawkins came in and reported. When we had the big fire over at the multi-family, uh, several months ago, we asked the fire chief to come and make a report. That practice will continue, uh, but you will not see a regularly scheduled verbal report here at the council meeting, but you will get written reports, and it only takes one councilman, call me up, say, "Hey, we want Frank Jones here at the meeting on Monday." He'll be here.
Okay, now, I just wanted to make sure.
With that, with that said, um, we're not gonna see them. Should nothing happen in the water department, we won't see them, we'll just get a written report. Is that correct?
That's correct.
For the entire year?
Yes. Although finance is a little bit different. As you know, we're having the finance director make regular reports anyways.
Okay. Anything else? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
We need a motion to appoint Mr. Brian Axiotis to the unexpired term on the planning zoning commission ending, uh, twelve-thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen.
So no.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this the only application we have?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Expecting big things, by the way. Uh, we need a motion to hold the August regular council meeting on, uh, August fifth at six o'clock. So, no, well, go ahead, I, I got, we'll talk about that in a second. Do we motion to have it on the fifth? Sorry. Discussion? Uh, when we, when it was passed, there was never any dates set. It, just so we had that, we could have one in August and one in, uh, right?
No, no, we passed it for the nineteenth.
Oh, we did? We, we had that discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, whatever, we're gonna do it on the fifth.
When did we pass that? I'm sorry.
Couple of meetings ago.
June, I think, beginning June, maybe end of May, I don't know. First meeting in June.
So this, or in lieu of, or?
Yeah, in lieu of, in lieu of. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we're only required to have one in August.
Well, that's what I was getting at. Any other discussion?
In lieu of.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
We need a motion to, uh, make the, uh, police chief the acting, uh, city manager in the absence of, uh, Mr. Lynch?
Second.
Discussion? Go ahead, please.
Mr. Stumpert?
Yes.
Mr. Bariak?
Yes.
Mr. Savet?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Alberini?
Yes.
Other comments?
Katie Carl, one-twenty-eight West Quarry Street. Yes, we had the CIC, and that's how we were able to do those. My concern on the CIC, the ordinance you were passing, okay, and that people need to know what the ordinances are, okay, are the amount of funds, where you're getting the funds from, okay? The fact that you're able to get, um, the grants in coordination with, like I said, the CDBG, um, loan grants, excuse me, and in coordinated, uh, neighborhood development services. We got, uh, grants, people were able to get the monies to help fix up their homes in coordination, or in conjunction with, excuse me, the city, and they were able to fix up their homes that way. That way, the city wasn't the banker per se, but it was through the city, and we weren't the banker. Okay, let's put it that way. Anyways, um, what happened to, on the turnpike, the Newton Falls, our name, which would used to be highlighted in yellow, on the turnpike sign? I would really like to know that, 'cause you, since we're out there now, our name, Newton Falls, used to be on the sign. It's not there anymore. It's greened out. We're not on the sign anymore on the turnpike exit. When my mom brought me home, it came the turnpike, and we're not on the sign anymore. It's gone. So since we're right here, we really need to be on the sign. So.
I'll call the Turnpike Commission.
I'll call the turnpike commissioner.
Thank you, because we're not there.
I didn't notice it.
Well, she just brought me home the other day, because I hopped her again for a week. So, anyways...
Sure.
That's very concerning, because, I mean, we need to be really highly visible now, especially with all of our development and everything, too. So, and I'll hop with the census committee and put my name down. Thank you.
Joe Batisti...
Hi, Jen.
Eagle born drive. I come to say thank you. The people on this side of the table, great bunch of people, great knowledge, everybody on this side of the table, including mayor, because you're not, you know, you're not on that side, you know, but you're close. Yeah. Thank you, great bunch of people to work with. Mr. Savet, I want to wish you luck in your new position. If I forgot anybody, I apologize, because this is just totally unprepared. Thank you.
Thank you. I just like to mention with, as we've done every year for the past three or four years now, we put up temporary signs on streets advising of no parking. This is going to be my sixth Fourth of July celebration. After the very first one, I realized there needed some fixing. There was like eight and a half by 11 pieces of paper about this size on poles that said no parking, and more cars were towed, and anyhow, the committee, the Fourth of July committee paid for those red signs. It made it great. It created a lot of good order on the streets. We weren't towing a lot of cars, we weren't ticketing a lot of cars, and most important, we've got about 25,000 people come to Newton Falls, and we want them all to have a good experience, not come back and their car's not there. So, anyhow, but if somebody sees on one of their streets signs that they think they might have a little better idea than I did, or the guys who work with me, call me. I had a call today with one issue we looked at. Probably tomorrow, we're going to move some signs around. So, and we will have a designated handicap parking lot, and in the past, it's just been little signs. Mr. Shaver has agreed to put up some good-sized handicap signs right next to the park in that small parking lot, so it's going to be designated for the handicapped. But once again, we're looking forward to it. We're... These signs help traffic leave the city. After the first year, I think it was about two hours for everybody to get out of town. Afterwards, after we started putting these signs up, I think last year, we had people out of the city within one hour. It was great. And we also have officers now assigned to East Broad and River Street at that crosswalk to help people cross the street safely. So, we're looking forward to a safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Chief, could you be a little more specific on where the handicap parking is?
It's just south of the bathrooms at the park, right on...
The block top area to the south of the baseball field?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, but we're going to have, Mr. Shaver's going to put two temporary poles in, and there's going to be good-sized handicap signs, and my auxiliary police officers and some other volunteers will be manning that lot, as well as others, to ensure that only those who belong there will be there.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, thanks.
More chiefs tonight.
Good evening again. I just wanted to address a couple of concerns with the bridge closing, and then I spoke with Mr. Lynch. There have been several comments brought to our attention that with the closing of the bridge, it would affect our fire response. I wanted to address that clearly. We have fire apparatus on the opposite side of the bridge. We will have an EMS unit on the opposite side of the bridge from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m. We've also established automatic response agreements with Milton, Lordstown, and Warren to aid in our response after midnight to get to those locations. They would, at the farthest point of our district, they'll respond automatically, and then we'll arrive unseen. In the event that there was any life-threatening emergency, they would take that response immediately and not wait on our arrival. And so, that we are fully prepared for the bridge to be closed down, and we do have fire apparatus on both sides of the bridge that will make an immediate response available to any needs. I know there's been some concerns about that, and the second part of that is, I just wanted to let you know that we are in running on that, so that any questions, that we would be prepared to meet that need. And much thanks to our partnering communities around us, Warren Township, Lordstown, and Milton, who respond automatically and have been a huge asset to us in these recent emergencies, and they make the so fluid transition that you don't know what department anyone's from, they just assume their roles and take that as a, one large department instead of being individual communities, and we couldn't function without their assistance in these large emergencies.
Thank you.
Chelsea Harper, 128 West Quarry. So, for the past two years, we've done a Walk for SAP. It's for substance abuse prevention. We'd like to do it again this year, obviously, with the city's permission. Those are the T-shirts that'll be for sale. This would be the third annual. Any proceeds from the T-shirts go to food the next year, and we also ended up being able to donate T-shirts to people who couldn't afford T-shirts that came last year. Basically, it's kind of like the Walk Against Heroin in Warren, except we wanted it to be all-inclusive. I'm an addict with over four years clean, and I kind of did the rainbow, so I'd rather...
Hold on, how long?
Over four years, March 5th, or March 4th. So, we kind of wanted to include everybody, and that's why it's Walk for Substance Abuse Prevention. We actually had quite a few people up on council who showed up last year and kind of supported us. I want to say Frank Fluda was there last year as well. We just kind of want to keep making it bigger. With the bridge project going on, we made it September 15th as a tentative date, so even if we have to cut the walk short, which there was a lot of people who couldn't exactly make the whole walk, that's fine. We'll still have pizza, water, maybe some games for kids, and I'm trying to get people that might be able to provide more information on like the rehabs in the area. All the guys from the Newton Falls Sober House came last year, so that was really nice, so we'll try and get them back, too. So, just kind of a little bit of information. The fire alarms, I have a rental house in Warren, right by the hot dog shop. They do require dwelling permits. In order to get said dwelling permit, you have to have the health inspector, Mr. Tony, come look at your house. Tony and I have a love-hate relationship, but I got everything done within a week and a half, and he was pretty happy. And that's one of their big things, and it's on every level. And as for commercial, I did, I'm not even going to lie, I wrote it on my hand. As for commercial, like the chief said, we have to have our fire extinguishers and alarms checked every year, per corporate, as well as I think the fire code. But it's not a bad thing. The dwelling permit is $77 in the city of Warren. It's not that big of a deal. If you can redo an entire house, and you can rent it out, and you're planning on your renters destroying it, $77 is nothing. And I think you renew it every year or when they move out, so... Yeah. Thanks.
The, on the September 15th?
Mm-hmm.
The assembly time, and where are you assembling?
In...
May, I...
In the parking lot.
If I may.
What?
If I may.
Oh, if I may, sorry. In the parking lot.
What time?
Probably 1:00. We're trying to avoid messing with the church group, because...
Services.
Church services, but they're, the church out there, Canal Street, I don't know. They came last year, all of them wanted to come next year, as well this year. So, we wanted to make it 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock, and then it's normally only like two hours long, so probably 4:00 o'clock would be shut down.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Oh.
Good evening. Brian Crop, 247 Elizabeth Street. Good evening, everybody. It's been, I haven't, wasn't able to be here for the last couple of meetings, was out of town, but I was able to watch and see what's been going on. This is also the first meeting I've spoke at, I think, since Mr. Savet was given the position. I wanted to congratulate you personally. Congratulations, our wards, looking forward to you doing some great things, and the council as well. And I also wanted to point out that the first time I spoke here, I rambled very quickly about a lot of the things that I saw that, you know, would like to see improvements here and there throughout town, and I just wanted to point out that we're beginning to see those things happen. It's only been a few months, and we're already seeing changes to the parks. I think Mr. Bariak's done some tree stuff around some of the rivers. We can see the rivers, the natural resources that we have, that are crucial to what we do here. I noticed that the falls have been lit, that looks amazing. Looking forward to seeing, you know, what we can do with the holidays, things move forward with that. The parks are starting to come around, all the signage. All these things are great, because people that live here, not only just people that come in through town, but people that live here are seeing these things. And I hope everyone on the council, and everyone in front of me now, is aware that not only people that live here, but people are seeing you guys online, seeing you, you know, you're being represented, you're representing us via YouTube, through this television station. So, keep, please keep that in mind. You do represent us, so carry yourselves appropriately, and it's good to see that the city is moving forward and progressing, and it's visual, we can all see that. So, I just wanted to point that out, and I wanted to thank you guys for what everybody's been doing, and thank you very much. Keep it up.
Anyone else? Mr. Savet?
I'm...
Mr. Bariak?
Yes, I'd just like to comment to Brian. I hate to tell him myself, but last week, we were working at the park, and two kayakers stopped at the park, and they, I wasn't there, and they said it was the first time that they could find a place to launch their kayak and move up the river. And to me, that meant more to me than anything. Now, we have a lot of more guests down there now, about 150 of them, that we really don't want, but they're down there. But also, I'd like to say, I'm going to be at the, I'm going to be at the Fourth of July. I was able to obtain a golf cart with bulletproof glass. I'm going to be throwing candy for the kids, so come out, bring your guns, and have a good time, and we're going to have some, I think the barbecue's still on.
Yep.
So, come on out and have a good time. Thank you.
Mr. Stumpert?
I'd just like to say that the parade starts at 10:00 a.m. on July 4th, so mark your calendar for that. Also, the fireworks will begin July 4th at 10:00 p.m. sharp, and I want everybody out there to have a hap, happy, healthy, safe Fourth of July. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say, I think we had some healthy discussion tonight. I think Katie brought up a lot of good questions. I think Mr. Lynch answered a lot of those questions very well, but it's good to ask those questions. And I also would like to welcome Brian to planning and zoning, and Mr. Crop, I'm very happy to see you up here, too. I think you should keep an eye open for board openings, but we, I think, could utilize him in a number of ways. He's a good speaker, and maybe we can use him with the TV somehow, anyway. Mr. Alberini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of notes. Both Bryans, we got two Bryans here tonight. Could you guys stand up for the cameras, please? Brian's coming on, the first Brian, Axiotis, is coming on planning and zoning, and Brian Crop, he did the YouTube video for Quality Switch. I'm friends with the Soul folks, the Souls over there. So, welcome. We appreciate you coming on board and volunteering your time, and as Mr. Beer said, there may be a possibility in the future that things may change, and you may, both you fellows may fill the gap, so congratulations to you as well. So, that being said, Karen, I met you at Red Cross here back in May, I think it was. Wonderful event, great organization. I've never seen so many fire chiefs in my whole life, man. It was like, I think I was the, I think I was the odd duck out, wasn't I, chief?
I think you and India.
Yeah, really, yeah.
Too many chiefs, not enough.
Too many chiefs. Chelsea, I just love it when you come up here and talk, because this councilperson is so proud of you, what you've accomplished in your life and the battle that you face. I get emotional about it, because I know it means so much to you, and you're an example to people who are addicted to drugs and alcohol and other things, and look at you, you're a manager for True Value Hardware.
Ace.
Ace, I'm sorry, and I blew that one. I blew the mood. True Value, Ace, they both look the same thing when I get to circular in a trivia or whatever it is. No more vindicator. Ace is the place. I just want you to know, I am very, very, very proud of you. And one more thing, too, Mr. Mayor, I was at the park all day Sunday, and Mr. Rusko and his team, the Newton Falls Youth Baseball League, man, they have transformed, as the guys had said back here, they have transformed that park into a showplace. They have done a great, great job with that, and if anybody from the baseball league is listening on TV, man, pat yourself on the back if your arms are long enough, and give yourself a kudo for all the hard work you've done. One more final thought, in any organization or any business, the most important thing, the most important asset in that organization or business is its people. It's people who make things go, and people always ask me a question all the time, what's it like owning your own business? I go, listen, if I didn't have great people working for me, I would be nothing. And here in Newton Falls, it's the people in the town that make the village great. And Brian Crop mentioned one thing, too. It's so important to promote our brand of Newton Falls and its people, and the community and its resources. So, I'm so proud of everybody, all you guys, all your hard work. I couldn't, this has been a great meeting for, nice and quiet and peaceful. So, hats off to everybody here, and hats off to everybody at home.
Ms. Musson? Attorney Fritz?
Oh, thank you, sir.
Mr. Lynch?
Just briefly, you know, the Indians have a great rookie this year. His name is Oscar Mercado.
Oh, yeah.
He's having a great season, he's playing fabulously, and we have some gentlemen that have stepped out of the shadows into the daylight of active participation in our community, and both were recognized a couple of times by Mr. Alberini and Councilman Beer, and Brian Crop and Brian Axiotis, and I also wanted to say thank you to both of them. Mr. Crop has been working very closely with the Newton Falls Television, and in our live broadcasts of the parade, first time our parade's been broadcast live on television, Mr. Crop will be one of our on-air personalities, and he's been very active in a number of projects around town. Brian Axiotis, who is the new planning and zoning member, went with us and took time off of work to accompany the field trip that we took with the members of council administration to look at the fiber activity over in Fairland, and in, what was the other community we went to?
Wadsworth.
Wadsworth, Ohio. And he also works in some technical IT areas as it relates to the organization he works for on a full-time basis, yet he gave us that time, and now he's stepping forward, giving us additional time for planning and zoning. You haven't seen the last of those two, and like Oscar Mercado, I think we have some outstanding rookies that are participating on behalf of our team, and we appreciate it. Last but not least, at the end of the parade, there was a barbecue referred to by Councilman Bariak. For those that are participants in the parade, now you have to march in the parade to have the opportunity to have access, but we will have a tent at the Arlington School, and burgers and hot dogs will be made available to parade participants at no cost, and the very outstanding musical skills of our law director, Joe Fritz, will be on display in that tent. So, there's a treat in both consumables and listenables for those that participate in the parade. So, please, please, when you finish marching in the parade, don't disappear and take off. Come by and see the many volunteers helping, led by the mayor and the members of city council, and also the activities of our fine musical, musically talented law director, Joe Fritz. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. I think the meeting following the tour of Westlon, or Westlon, shoot.
Fairland.
Fairland. I go, Westlon's gone, it's just gone. Oh, we did a tour of Westlon, was that, boy, Fairland. I mentioned that, you know, Mr. Crop, Mr., boy, let's just start over there. Back after we did the Fairland trip, I talked about Mr. Axiotis going on the trip, and appreciated his technical knowledge. As I told you, there, we had a little discussion about the technical and the physical aspect of doing what we were talking about there, and it's nice to be able to sit down and relate to people who have that experience and understand what we are attempting to do, and it's nice to see a step forward, and that's why I say we're looking for some big things here. We've, you've got some big shoes to follow, I'm going to tell you right now. Mr. Savet has done a tremendous job on planning and zoning. I don't think we ever even thanked you for that, but you did a great job while you were there, and we expect bigger things. As to Mr. Crop, I already had written on my final comments, I was riding around and cutting some grass there over the weekend and today, and I know that there are a number of homes that we have sent letters to, to get them fixed up, because they look, they